Yeah, we're trying to get this signed. We checked like, yeah, to the minute. No, sir. Do you want me to go and take a quick look? Do you know what's going on?
You go first.
Do you want me to start it? Okay, okay.
How are you?
How you doing?
I'm good, thank you.
That's a time getting you there.
Yeah, huh?
Yeah.
There was some knocking on the door.
The river was blocking, blocked off.
Oh, I see.
The head go all the way into Sierra Highway.
Uh-huh.
People get the green light and they're sitting there.
Yeah.
Come on our street to turn on tip.
Uh-huh.
Really, people sitting there.
What do you think about this?
To come up here.
Yeah.
I found them.
Made it though. Hey.
Hi.
And you can hear me? Tell me what you, tell me what you think. Does this look safe? Do you feel comfortable? You can hear me better, right?
Yes, that's for sure.
Mayor, you okay with this?
Yeah, you gonna be doing some welding?
You got the goodies?
Evening, everyone. Sir. Um, we're gonna call the meeting to order, five o'clock, uh, Council and Housing Authority. Um, can we get a roll call, Madam City Clerk?
Chair Hoffbauer?
Here.
Vice Chair Ben Court?
Here.
Commissioner Carrillo?
Here.
Commissioner Bishop?
Here.
Commissioner Lula?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
And Commissioner Frigusant.
Is she zooming in?
She was, yes, we were certainly zooming in.
I believe she's gonna be zooming into the meeting.
She's on that, in there? Okay, so let, can we show her present?
Yes.
Thank you, okay. Um, City Clerk, do we have any, uh, e-commerce for the, uh, Housing Authority?
No, sir, not at this time.
Okay, presentation by the City Attorney, sir?
All right, thank you, Your Honor. We have just those items set forth on the agenda.
All right, so, uh, we will, uh, we'll go back to a closed session. And, uh, we will see y'all shortly, huh? Okay, we're out.
You still have a quorum. I'm just gonna report out and then we're gonna close the meeting anyway. Are we live?
Yeah.
All right, if I could report on the closed session, all members of the Housing Authority were present and able to participate in all matters. Regarding item 4.1, Community Development Associates versus Palmdale, the Housing Authority was provided an update on the matter and provided unanimous direction to staff. There's no further reportable action at this time.
Excellent, thank you sir. We'll close out the Housing Authority meeting. And Madam City Clerk, could we get the roll call for the council meeting closed session, please?
Mayor Hopkla?
Here.
Councilwoman Dunn, where?
Here.
Councilmember Caddo?
Here.
Councilmember Allen?
Here.
Here.
Excellent. City Attorney. Oh, City Clerk, any ecomments on this session?
There was one comment that was submitted. It came into the City Clerk's office this past Sunday.
Okay, did you wanna read that into the record for us?
We can't hear her.
How about now?
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry about that. What I said was that we did receive one public comment into the record on this past Sunday.
Which item is this on?
This is a non-agendized item.
Do we want to do that now or?
No, we'll that sort of be, we'll just do the closed session.
Okay.
All right, we'll go ahead and, City Attorney, you wanna present, give us a presentation of what we're headed in for?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Your Honor. The only items to be discussed are those that are otherwise included on the agenda.
All right, so we're going to go ahead and go to closed session. We'll see you back here shortly. Thank you.
...
Everything rolling? You good?
Yes.
Okay, City Attorney?
Thank you, Your Honor. As of the closed session, all members of the council were present and able to participate in all matters. As to item ten point one, Community Development Associates versus Palmdale, the matter was no longer required and was not discussed. As to item ten point two, Responsible Growth Palmdale versus City Palmdale, the city council has provided an update on this matter. There is no further reportable action at this time. As to item ten point three, Conference of Labor Negotiators, the city council on unanimous vote agreed to terms with J.J. Murphy, City Manager, the unrepresented party, as set forth hereafter, specifically as to terms not including compensation that are included in item twenty six point two of this agenda. And as to item ten point four, Anticipate Litigation, the city council has provided an update on this matter and provided unanimous direction to staff. There is no further reportable action at this time, and that completes my report.
Thank you, sir. All right, we're going to go ahead and we'll adjourn to closed session meeting. We'll return here at about seven o'clock. Thank you.
Great.
Everything rolling? You good? Okay, City Attorney?
Thank you, Your Honor. As of the closed session, all members of the council were present and able to participate in all matters. As to item ten point one, Community Development Associates versus Palmdale, the matter was no longer required and was not discussed. As item ten point two, Responsible Growth Palmdale versus City of Palmdale, the City Council has provided an update on this matter. There is no further reportable action at this time. As to item ten point three, Conference with Labor Negotiators, the City Council in unanimous vote agreed to terms with J.J. Murphy, City Manager, the Unrepresented Party, as set forth hereafter, specifically as to terms not including compensation that are included in item twenty six point two of this agenda. And as to item ten point four, Anticipated Litigation, the City Council has provided an update on this matter and provided unanimous direction to staff. There is no further reportable action at this time, and that completes my report.
Thank you, sir. All right, we're gonna go ahead and we'll adjourn to closed session meeting. We'll return here at about seven o'clock. Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
How you doing, Jess?
Somebody's got two sources on there, a lot of feedback.
Hey gentlemen, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. You get to wear the helmet, huh? All right. That means there'll be two pictures. It's not paid up, man. Did you get it planned?
America's most wanted.
So it's just gonna be you and I sitting up here?
Most likely.
I thought I saw Austin on the...
Yeah, Austin was doing it for us, too. We've got to be here.
Huh?
We've got to be here.
Congratulations.
How long?
Um, just before Christmas.
How you enjoying it? So far, so good?
Pretty good.
Good, not bad.
Be nicer for something to do.
Oh, see? That's exactly what he said.
Yeah. Well, I did too. I have a lot of house.
You got a lot of house.
And stuff, but, you know, still, I wanna go and travel and do stuff like that.
Are you gonna stick around?
Uh, for a while, yeah. I've lived here my whole life, so...
Mark, how many years? Twenty-five?
Here? Uh, twenty-seven.
That's great.
Um, I understand, but I tried doing that last year and...
Oh, gee, right. And then you got COVID, right?
Yeah.
Okay, it's looking like it's, uh, seven o'clock. And we are, uh, going to call the seven o'clock meeting to order. Uh, city clerk, uh, are we seeing everybody?
Yes, Mayor.
I got Bishop on there twice.
From our view, we only see him once.
No, no, I don't see him, right?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I am on there. I'm on there twice. I logged into my computer as well, so just ignore that.
Okay, all right, and, uh, so...
He went away again.
I'm here.
All right, we'll call a meeting to order. Um, Madam, uh, city clerk, can you please call it, Paul?
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Here.
Mayor Procham Benkort?
Here.
Councilmember Caddio?
Present.
Councilmember Lola?
Here.
And Councilmember Bishop?
Here.
Excellent, okay, um, so I got the, the next item I have, well, I'm missing on my agenda here. I'm missing the, uh, the pledge allegiance, um, so let's see, uh, Chris Frogger, could you lead in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Sure.
She's got the flag right there, too.
Now, Dan, how do we do it through here? Place your right hand over your heart, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We're to stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's do an omen of silence for our, uh, troop and, uh, first responders, please. Very good, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. All right, so, um, next item I have is a presentation. City Manager Murphy, you have the Warrior Award, sir?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, it's my honor tonight, uh, to be up here for a few reasons. I'm gonna start with, the Warrior Award, but also the, the two recipients, uh, Mark Etherdin and Steve Montenegro, uh, are also being recognized for, uh, other reasons. Uh, Steve just hit his, uh, twentieth year here with the city of Palmdale, so we will give him the plaque, yeah, to recognize him for that. And Mark just retired after twenty-seven years, so I can't think of, uh, a better reason to be up here. Uh, I'll let them arm wrestle on who's gonna take the picture with, uh, we said that it won't mess, uh, Steve's hair up, so maybe, uh, may- maybe we'll do that, but let, let me get to the, the nomination, um, and he was, these gentlemen were nominated by Chuck, Bruce, and Carleen, and their nomination reads, um, "On many levels and in supportive divisions in several city departments, Steve and Mark perform at a high level, and with an eye to promoting excellence in the urban grounds and green spaces division of Public Works. Working hand in hand to keep the city green and beautiful from the parks to its urban forest management. Recently, however, their efforts have been highlighted at the state level. City Development Services staff are wrangling with the State of California Department of Fish and Wildlife regarding the Wa- Western Joshua Tree, which was recently listed as a candidate species under the California Endangered Species Act. Steve and Mark brought forward historic data that they have been collecting to, that which shows the city's wildly successful rates in relocating and caring for trees. These rates were as high as ninety-seven to ninety-nine percent. This data has proven instrumental, as Palmdale is the only city in LA County that is working towards being able to issue a take permit during the year candidacy period. This information has proven invaluable in building strong relationships with CDFW and charting a positive path forward with the agency. Steve and Mark are warriors, truly working hard to best serve the residents of Palmdale. And I also wanna commend, um, the efforts when we put the hundredth tree out here, uh, in dedication to the army soldier who lost her life over, uh, domestic violence, in honor of her. Uh, Steve took that project and really ran through the tape on that for us, so it's my honor to present them each with a warrior coin. Uh, and to Steve, we'll give the, uh, his twenty-year plaque. So I don't know if you wanna come up and...
Want to say anything, you can?
Yeah. Thank you, Brian, thank you.
Uh, go ahead, Mark. He's gonna be around longer. Put it on. Don't worry about the hair gel. You're good.
One size fits all?
Uh, well, I don't know.
Gotta find out.
There we go. It fits perfectly. Ideal. Why don't you stand in the middle?
Yeah.
What are you doing, Steve? How about?
There we go.
Guess what's anything?
Um, yeah, I would, if I could have two minutes.
Now, you gotta, you guys gotta split it over the month, so however you divide it up. I'll sit here and take that whenever you give it to me.
Thank you very much, Mayor, City Council, City Manager, City Attorney. Uh, I truly value this award, and I can tell you it means a lot to the team. In retrospect, I wanna thank Mark for his many contributions throughout his twenty-seven years of service. I can still remember being paired up with you my first day in the field. I was fortunate to start my career with someone, someone passionate about natural resources. In the spirit of today's daily motivational email, please know we have a team empowered to be confident and impactful through professional discipline. A team committed to unity of purpose. We are one section tasked with the work previously done by two sections and have demonstrated dividends through a more demanding workload. I hope to continue building on the team's track record of achievements, like our work on this Joshua Tree project, by cultivating awareness of real and measurable benefits provided by quality and well-kept infrastructure. Looking into the future, we are at a seminal moment. Much like the city's great policy around Joshua Trees, I recommend we look at our street tree ordinance and work towards holistic urban forest policy as the opportunity to guide our retail, commercial, and residential sectors. As you all know, general plan updates can only come around every twenty-five years, and God willing, I'll be retired long before the next one. Lastly, I wanna thank Chuck, Carleen, and Bruce for their leadership and the opportunity to contribute to this very important effort. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you, congratulations.
Did you guys work out the helmet responsibilities? Just do whatever and just bring it back, kind of, in one piece.
All right, so, uh, now we got the, um, proclamation, uh, for Black History Month should be next, correct, uh, Mr. City Manager?
Uh, yes, sir. It's, uh, two proclamations, uh, to the NAACP and to the Way Center of Truth, uh, in recognition of National African American History Month. And if, uh, be so kind, if, uh, Sean and me, Jesse, if you would come up and maybe, uh, stand on each side, and I'll, I'll read the proclamation. And if uh, be so kind, if uh, Shannon and me, Jesse, if you would come up and maybe uh stand on each side, and I'll, I'll read the proclamation. I'm sure you got it, okay. Whereas, American historian Carter G. Woodson established Black History Week nearly a century ago to commemorate and celebrate the contributions to our nation made by African Americans. And whereas, across the United States, millions of Americans will join together to celebrate remarkable accomplishments and lasting impact our country's great African American leaders and citizens. And whereas, in this national celebration, we applaud the transformational contributions of the African American community, which has overcome tremendous adversity to build lasting change for generations to come. And whereas, the two thousand twenty-one national theme for the observance of National African American History Month is Black Family, Representation, Identity, and Diversity. And whereas, this month, we celebrate the cultural heritage, diverse contributions, and unbreakable spirit of African Americans through bravery, perseverance, faith, and resolve, often in the face of incredible prejudice and hardship. African Americans have enhanced and advanced every aspect of American life. We commend the heroes, pioneers, and common Americans who tirelessly fought for and firmly believed in the promise of racial equity granted by our Creator, enshrined in our Constitution, and enacted in our laws. Now, Steve and Hoffbauer, Mayor of the city of Palmdale, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby deem it an honor and pleasure to proclaim February two thousand twenty-one National African American History Month and call upon public officials, educators, and all Americans to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Signed the second day, February two thousand twenty-one. Gentlemen, uh, we have these here, and I'll give you each opportunity to speak. Shannon, you wanna go first?
Uh, thank you very much, um, uh, on behalf of the NAACP, Antelope Valley, um, I accept this proclamation. And um, it is my honor to serve um as president of the uh, of the branch, current president. And um, one of the uh secrets is to let talented people do their thing, you see? And um, sometimes you push too hard, sometimes you don't push enough, that's life. And um, not forgetting um those that came before us. Man, to my right is uh one of our former presidents, um, and um people throughout this um city are inspirations, we find inspiration and motivation everywhere we go. So um, thanks again, I appreciate it.
Thank you, uh, to Mayor Hoffbauer, to members of the city council, to my dear good friend JJ, City Manager, to the city clerks and the city staff, thank you all so much for this uh wonderful uh opportunity to accept this uh proclamation for Black History on behalf of members of the Way Center of Truth. I want to thank members of the Way Center of Truth for allowing me to be my authentic self on Sunday mornings. I know I drive them crazy getting them involved in the community, but I just believe in uh, uh, community representation. I also accept this um Black History Month proclamation on behalf of the Black Lives Matter movement. So many people who prostrated their bodies and their selves in Lancaster and Palmdale uh during the demonstrations in the spirit of George Floyd and Breonna Taylor. Uh, so many lives have been uh sacrificed because of this struggle. And to the countless faces of those who have not been on television, who have not been in the newspaper, I accept this award on behalf of you as well, this proclamation on behalf of you as well. You uh may not have been acknowledged in the, in the press or in the, on the uh, on television, but I want you to know this city council acknowledges what, the work that you have done, and I appreciate City of Palmdale stepping up to the plate and acknowledging Black History Month. So, in the spirit of our ancestors, and also in the spirit of our dear sister Cicely Tyson, who just made her transition, she's now with the ancestors, I accept this proclamation on her behalf as well. Thank you all so much, God bless you.
I didn't say that. I'm gonna take a couple just to make sure that uh. Okay, if you want, I can do an individual one of each of you, but spur it out a little bit, if you can take your mask off, there you go. I'll just do an individual that way on. One says.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, who's gonna be giving us the presentation on the um, uh, on our cute critter? I didn't uh, I don't have anything in front of me here, but I know that we do that every, every meeting, and we've been quite successful in uh getting these uh homeless critters.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, um, tonight, we are going to actually have four cute critters for you to take a look at. Um, and going along, hold on, I'm trying to share here.
We got it, it's there.
Got it, okay, great.
Yep.
Still mastering this, so, as you can see, we have four adorable four-legged, um, hopefully Valentines, um, that will be, that are all available for adoption, um, and before I go any further, I want to make sure that everybody is aware that all dog adoption fees have been waived through uh February fourteen, and all cat adoptions have been waived throughout the entire month of February. So, the first little girl, little girl, um, that you see up in the top left, that is Kelly, she's seven years old. Um, she came in as a stray, she's a little bit shy, but very, very friendly. Um, and she is recommended to go to a home with uh middle-aged kids or larger, and calm dogs if possible. New Girl, that is the name I gave her myself, since she is brand new to the shelter and uh hasn't even been given a name yet, but she came in as a stray on January thirty-first, and she'll be available for adoption on February fourth. Then you have Little Fabian down there, he's a two-year-old neutered, he's been at the care center since December twenty-first. So, he's, he's looking for his home, he's high-energy, loves to play, um, but would be best in a home with adults and no dogs, no other dogs. And then look at Rousey down there with that underbite, she is so cute. Um, she's four years old, um, she was adopted, unfortunately returned, she's very, very playful and very sweet with staff. Um, but she is also recommended to go to a home uh with adults and no other dogs. So these four beauties are available at the Palmdale Animal Care Center, if anybody's interested in them. Um, they can contact the Palmdale Care Center and make arrangements um for their adoption or to, to meet them as well as any other animals there. And for those that adopt any of our featured pets, uh, we have a goodie bag available for them here in Neighborhood Services. They just gotta give us a hauler and we'll make sure we get that to them somehow.
Alright, so, everybody look at those, uh, there's some cute dogs there, and I know uh uh, when uh Jesse would bring it in, my wife was always afraid I was coming home with another dog. So, uh, thanks for uh reminding everybody that they need to be a single dog home, 'cause you're keeping me out of trouble. And uh, yeah, we have um, we have our goodie bags and uh filled full of um a lot of good stuff, so, thank you very much, Carrie.
Welcome.
Okay, the next item is item number seventeen, waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances, uh, do we have a motion for that?
Second.
Yeah, I didn't hear who the, who made the first?
Mr. Loa.
Okay, Loa, and then uh Carrillo made the second, um, uh, uh, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Procham Bencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Hey, that item carries on number eighteen, uh, public comments on the consent calendar and non-agenda items within the purview of the uh, uh body, uh, Mr. um, uh, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Your Honor, I would like to clarify that I have received one email communication that has been transmitted and reviewed by all council members and will be received into the record by the city clerk.
Alright, thank you, uh, any other, any other e-commerce, uh, Madam City Clerk?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on to item number nineteen, consent calendar. Um, all matters on the consent calendar can be acted with one motion, unless an item is pulled by the council. Uh, do I have a motion for the consent calendar?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Yeah, so.
Richard Low with the first.
Just for the record, can we make sure that uh, we state our names so that uh, with the Zoom meeting, it just uh helps clarify that, so.
Richard Low with the first.
Then uh Bishop with the second.
Alright, I got Bishop on the second. Any other comments? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Procham Bencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent, that item passes unanimously, item number twenty, we'll call to order the seven o'clock Housing Authority Special Meeting, so we'll need to have our uh roll call uh with our uh Housing Authority members.
Chair Hoffbauer?
Here.
Vice Chair Loa?
Here.
Commissioner Bencourt?
Here.
Commissioner Carrillo?
Here.
And Commissioner Bishop?
Commissioner, would you?
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
And Commissioner Frigasans?
Here.
Thank you.
Excellent, uh, item number twenty-two, do we have any public comments on the uh Housing Authority Consent Calendar?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Very good, we'll move on to item number twenty-three, which is the Housing Authority Consent Calendar. Uh, do we have any um, uh, anybody want to uh discuss or pull an item, or do I hear a motion?
This is one motion to approve. Second, Loa.
Who is that in the second?
Uh, I'll defer to the Ms. Frigasans.
Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion in a second by Carrillo and Frigasans uh to adopt the consent calendar as comprised? Any further comment, or roll call vote?
Chair Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Vice Chair Loa?
Yes.
Commissioner Bencourt?
Yes.
Commissioner Carrillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Bishop?
Yes.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
And Commissioner Frigasans?
Yes.
Hey, item number twenty-three passes unanimously, and we will thank and excuse our housing commissioners, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brown, stay well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Play it safe now.
Sir?
Play it safe.
Oh, yeah.
Take care of yourself.
Appreciate it.
Alrighty, we'll move on to item number twenty-four, uh, and I asked the uh city clerk on this item, um the only thing I was looking at on this was this to be an interim, uh, they have uh, we're missing meetings, I just want to make sure that if there's a quorum issue, that they can let me know, and uh, but I really think that this is uh, we were well-served uh by uh, by Dennis over the years, I really think that this needs to be a public member. We have a lot of people that are getting interested in um, uh, participating, and this is one of those boards that um works well. They have an excellent uh relationship between the board members, I just didn't want to get them in a pickle where, for a quorum problem in the meantime, so I fully intend, I've got, I got plenty on my plate, uh, and uh, you guys freaked me up with my Thursdays, I don't need something new showing up, but if they need me, I'll be there, and with the uh, with the council's uh consent here, um, I'd like to do that with the understanding it's an interim appointment, and uh, last the uh, first of all, the council members, if you've got somebody you think would be a good person to serve in that board, take a look at the people that are on there, um, and uh, see if you uh have a recommendation. Uh, we don't get an immediate recommendation here, in the next couple of days, uh, we'll ask the city clerk to advertise that, is everybody uh cool with that?
Yes.
Yes, I'm good with that.
Okay, good, alright, so um, the uh, the city clerk, I think we need to do a roll call vote because of the Zoom thing here.
Mayor, do we need a, a first and a second?
Not an appointment.
Okay.
It's just a gratification by the council.
Thank you for clarifying. Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Procham Loa?
Yes.
Whoop, it's Bencourt's mayor vote.
Sorry. Mayor Procham Bencourt.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes, again.
And Councilmember Bishop, I'll get it right, I promise.
Yes.
Okay, it, it, it happens to the best of us, trust me. Alright, um, thank you, um, so we got a, a public hearing, uh, item number twenty-five, um uh, I show Ambrose, but I uh, I'm suspecting it's someone else because a screen just popped open here. Sarah, is that gonna be you?
I'll be presenting the public hearing.
Thank you, so uh, do you want to tell us what we're gonna be uh looking at here?
Yes, uh, good evening, Mayor and members of council, uh, City Stock is requesting a public hearing to review the draft amendment to the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty annual action plan to program nine hundred ninety-seven thousand six nineteen of CDBG uh COVID funding, uh, entitled CB three, and reinstate fifty thousand dollars to CDBG public facilities and infrastructure activity through the cancellation of a CDBGCV public service activity. Uh, two, to receive public comments in compliance with the requirements of the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, and the city's citizen participation plan. Three, direct staff to incorporate the public comments into the nineteen, twenty, two thousand twenty annual action plan substantial amendment. And four, approve the resolution CC two thousand twenty-one oh oh six, approving the two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty annual action plan substantial amendment, and request for CDBGCV three grant funds. And finally, number five, authorize city manager or the state with need to execute the application for federal assistance, require certifications, agreements with subrecipients, and any documents related to the acceptance and implementation associated with the substantial amendment and the CDBGCV three program. For the record, resolution number CC two thousand twenty-one oh six reads, "A resolution of the city council of the city of Palmdale approving the city of Palmdale substantial amendment to the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty action plan and requesting CDBGCV three grant funds and authorizing the city manager to execute the application for federal assistance, require certifications and other documents associated with the update of the substantial amendment to the two thousand nineteen through two thousand twenty action plan, and to negotiate and execute agreements for subrecipients." The report before you is the second amendment to the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty annual action plan. It incorporates an additional allocation of funds that came through the CARES Act uh back in March. Uh, HUD has uh gone through their process, and they're allocating us an additional uh allocation, which they're entitled in CDBGCV three. Um, and we are proposing to uh program additional programs for the community uh to respond. Um, and we are proposing to, uh, program additional programs for the community, uh, to respond, prepare for, and prevent the COVID-nineteen, uh, pandemic. These activities include additional funds for the South Antelope Valley Emergency Services, uh, additional funds for rental assistance as well as mortgage assistance. The amendment also incorporates an administrative action to reinstate fifty thousand dollars of funds from the COVID response, um, that we had requested back in, uh, June. And we're now requesting that these funds get reinstated back to the regular CDBG allocation, uh, because we received additional funds dedicated to COVID and, um, we'd kind of like to keep those two pots of money, uh, in their own lane. So staff recommend that council approve the recommendations in the staff report, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments, uh, on this item?
Not at, not at this time.
Okay, we have a staff recommendation. Do I have a motion, or are there any questions for the, uh, staff at this time?
I have a quick question. Um, no money was allocated for economic opportunity programs, uh, the recommendations coming from staff on this?
That's correct, we have, um, two allocations of COVID funds. So, uh, three hundred thirty-three thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars have been allocated out of the CDBG COVID-specific funds. And then, um, we've also dedicated, uh, an additional, it's on page five of the staff report, um, an additional two hundred and seventy thousand eighty-two dollars of regular CDBG funds, uh, to economic activities. Um, and so the total for CDBG funds that have been dedicated to economic opportunity activities is five hundred and fifty thousand eight oh two.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Serving our businesses, especially in this time of COVID, and to mitigate the impact.
Okay, thank you for that. Have a question too on the, uh, amounts dedicated for rental assistance and mortgage assistance. I believe it's three hundred thousand for one and three hundred and fifty for the other one. Could you clarify that?
Yes, definitely. Uh, we have made a, a slight difference in the amount, uh, recommended on this particular funding source. Um, you'll see that the mortgage assistance, uh, total is, um, five hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars and ninety-five. Uh, and then for CDBG funds, we have three hundred thousand dollars dedicated. Back in, uh, June in twenty twenty, we brought forth, uh, to the city council, an action plan for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one program year. And in that program year, we, uh, programmed, uh, three hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in home funds for rental assistance. So the actual amount available for rental assistance, uh, from the consolidated plan program, uh, both CDBG and home combined is, uh, six hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars.
And none of these funds are due to the COVID, uh, pandemic, correct?
They're all in response to the COVID pandemic.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm not sure I've heard this question correctly.
Yeah, so, so with that, I, I, I have a, a comment and a, um, question for consideration for the council. On, on Friday, Salva had an event where they recognized, uh, that some, uh, laborers, day laborers and farm workers are getting abused, uh, that unfortunately is still happening. Um, some of them don't get paid, a- and I really think that they are essential workers. They are picking up the, 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 um, vegetables and things that we put on our, our table. Um, is, is there an appetite from the council, or maybe staff recommendation on how we can look at, uh, a way to provide assistance for those farm workers, uh, and laborers who get abused and not get paid? Um, maybe that's something that, uh, we can get direction, um, from the city managers, how we can, in the future, take that into consideration, or if there's any appetite from the council to, to discuss this, uh, issue that is happening within our residents here in Palmdale.
If I may, um, the city does have several, uh, responses available to, uh, the population that you're identifying. Uh, we will definitely take your comments back and ensure that, uh, our programs are, um, available to as many residents as, uh, we are able to serve. And then I'd also like to mention that the city has a contract with the Housing Rights Center. And through them, especially with regard to the COVID impact and everything happening around, um, landlord rights and, and tenant rights, uh, and there is free assistance, uh, housing counseling, uh, legal counseling and so forth, available to all tenants and landlords in our community to ensure that they're, um, getting the, uh, assistance that they need and, and sh- and following the, the new laws that they continue to come out.
Okay.
And, and I would just add, uh, councilman, I'm, I'm prepared, as, as we discussed, would like to sit down with Salva to find out their future and if they're going to run some of the same activities they have in the past and talk about, uh, budget allocation as we're getting ready for a budget in, in March and April. So I would like to, to talk about that, uh, and see the different funding pots, some they would qualify, and if not, uh, look at some of, uh, our general fund.
Thank you for that, uh, appreciate the, uh, the willingness to look at that sector of our population. Some of these are our residents, uh, and, you know, again, to, to me, they are essential workers because it is because of them that I'm able to go to the market and get vegetables, um, that I sometimes have to force my six-year-olds to, to eat them. Uh, kids don't tend to be fond of vegetables, but, uh, to me, that's something that, uh, we need to pay attention to. Again, unfortunately, these, uh, cases keep happening, they keep getting abused, uh, and that's something that I like to see, um, like you said, Mr. J.J. Murphy, uh, to have some conversations with Salva and see how we can help. Yes, ma'am.
Um, I, I would like to say, um, if, if Salva has any, uh, any local employers that are, are abusing them and not paying them, I think the council needs to be made, made aware, perhaps in a, in a conversation with Salva. Um, nobody that's employing people within our city should be abusing them, you know, with their, their labor, their pay, or financial use. So if we could get a list of, uh, who within our city limits is not paying them, I think that's very important for us to know.
They actually do have a list, they actually are providing, uh, financial assistance, uh, to those, uh, members of our community. I believe that through different programs, they're actually providing two hundred and fifty dollars a month, uh, for those, uh, residents that keep taking, uh, being a financial shock. So, yeah, that, that list exists, uh, they do have a list, and they are residents within our city limits. Uh, and again, through other organizations, they've been able to provide that assistance. So thanks for the conversation, and again, thank you, uh, Mr. City Manager for-
Yeah, J.J., J.J., get back to us on that, and, uh, we'll be happy to, uh, I think, uh, nobody likes being ripped off, so.
Thank you.
I have a staff recommendation here, do I have a motion on this issue?
Just one second, Steve, I have one additional question, and that is on the mortgages, uh, the rental and mortgage assistance. Do we have an idea how many, um, how many individuals might actually get help with this budget?
At this point, our current model is to provide, uh, six thousand dollars per household for, uh, qualified mortgage households. Um, and then our program for the rental assistance is five thousand dollars. So I could do the quick math where you can like.
No, that's okay, I can figure that out, so six thousand per, okay.
Oh, sixteen thousand.
I appreciate you bringing that up, Juan, it's something I'm very supportive of, uh, as of well.
Thank you, guys. And, Mr. Mayor, can we have a voice vote to close the public hearing before we move on to the staff recommendation?
Yes, sir. So I have a motion to close public hearing, please?
So move, Richard Loa.
Second.
Loa made the motion, who made the second?
Bishop.
Bishop, second. Voice vote, please.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Procham Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Okay, do we have a motion on this item?
Move to approve, Richard Loa.
Second.
And Bishop.
Okay, Loa had the motion, Bishop had the second. Uh, city clerk, voice vote, please.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Procham Bettencourt? Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Okay, it's unanimous. Twenty-five point two, public hearing and review of proposed resolution number CC twenty twenty-one dash zero zero five for adoption. Uh, I show, I show Chuck Heffernan, is that, uh, you going to be handling that?
Yes, sir, just, uh, one second, I was trying to start my video, but it doesn't seem to be working. Oh, there we go. Okay, thank you for your patience on that, Mayor. I was in the city council, item number twenty-five point two is a, is for the Edwards Credit Union Annexation of Streetlight and for maintenance. Uh, this is a companion to item number nineteen point three whereby you approved the engineer's report and declared the intent to assess. Item twenty-five point two actually takes that to the next and final step where you would approve by resolution twenty point twenty twenty-one dash zero zero five, approve the annexation of assessment parcel three zero zero five zero five zero 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 one into the City of Palmdale Streetlight Maintenance District, number one, as an annexation, including the leviation assessments for fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two.
Excellent, city clerk, do we have any, uh, e-commerce on this item?
Mayor, did you hear that? There was a no.
There was a no, okay.
Yes.
I, I need a motion to close public hearing, please? Loa, approve, uh, motion?
Second, Terrillo.
Corio, second. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Procham Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Okay, do I, uh, have a motion or any other discussion on this item? Do you have a motion on this item?
Yes, move to approve the item. Richard Loa. Second by Corio.
Yeah, Mike, Mike, please?
It was a first by Loa, second by Corio. My God.
Okay, alrighty, um, vote, please?
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Procham Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Okay, item carries unanimously. Okay, we have item number twenty-five point three's public hearing, review of proposed ordinance fifteen fifty-two for adoption. Staff reference is, uh, Ms. Saxton. Or your designated me.
Go ahead, Ben, just hit your, uh, volume. I can't hear you, Ben.
Ben, you-
It looks like Ben might be having some technical difficulties, so I can, uh, step in, um, and cover for him, or he can come over to my office and we can switch spots. So, um, I can go ahead and read the ordinance into the record. It is ordinance number one five five two, approving zoning ordinance amendment twenty dash zero zero four, amending various sections of Title seventeen of the Palmdale Municipal Code to improve the organization consistency and flow of the document and find that the project is not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act.
Excellent, city clerk, do we have any, uh, public comments on this item?
Not at this time.
Mr. Mayor, we have a, uh, in motion to introduce the ordinance?
Okay. Do I have a motion to introduce the ordinance?
I'll make the motion to introduce the ordinance.
Okay, Bettencourt, second, please? I'll second it. Can we, uh, um, vote on this item? Mr. City Attorney, if, if we just, if we get no dissent, um, does that count as unanimous, or does it have to be individually polled? It's being done both ways.
Right, for the purpose of, of virtual meeting, I would voice poll for each of them. And again, for this item, the reason's simple, it's an ordinance, that's why we're voting to introduce, and we'll hold, open the public hearing, voice vote to close. I, I understand it's duplicative, but because of the nature of the meeting.
Okay, city clerk, roll call.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Procham Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent, um, so, uh, was that, so, was that for the introduction of the ordinance?
That's correct, Your Honor, now if you could open the public hearing, that'd be great.
Okay, any public comments?
Not at this time.
Okay, uh, motion to close the hearing, please?
So move, Loa.
Second, Bishop?
So I think Loa-
That's correct.
And Bishop.
Keeps going off here. So, yeah, I do move that.
Yeah, city clerk is kicking you off, man, for good reason, probably. City clerk, we go ahead and do the, um, roll call vote on that item, please.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Mayor Procham Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Excellent, so I have the staff recommendation is adopt ordinance number fifteen fifty-two, do I have a motion?
Move to adopt this.
Okay, Bettencourt had the motion?
Second.
Bishop, second.
Bishop, second. Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Mayor Procham Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Item carries unanimously, twenty-five point four, public hearing and review of proposed, proposed resolutions number twenty twenty-one dash zero zero nine and twenty twenty-one dash zero one zero for adoption. Mr. City Attorney, please.
Thank you very much, uh, and although we had a waiver of the reading of resolutions at the beginning of the agenda for the purpose of this item, I'm going to read them both into the record. To adopt a resolution number CC two zero two one dash zero zero nine, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale declaring certain property rights and fee simple necessary for the construction of the East Avenue Q-two Improvement Project, Clark APN thirty fifteen zero one two dash zero three six. Likewise, adopt resolution number CC two oh two one dash zero one zero, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palmdale declaring certain property rights and fee simple necessary for the construction of East Avenue Q-two Improvement Project, Havivi APN thirty fifteen zero one two zero zero one.
Excellent. Madam City Clerk, uh, was there anything special about this, uh, um, or, uh, can we, uh, look for public comment?
Public commentary, we can open the public hearing at this time.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, uh, was there any public comments received on this item?
No, Mayor, not at this time.
Excellent, and can I have a motion to close public hearing, please?
So move, Corio.
Second, Loa.
Excellent, uh, voice vote on that item, please?
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Procham Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. City Attorney, can we take both these items concurrently for a vote?
It would be preferable, given the nature, if we could take them separately.
I need a motion on resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero zero nine, please.
I'll make the motion to adopt resolution number CC two zero two one dash zero zero nine.
Bishop, second.
Bettencourt and Bishop, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Procham Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Item carries unanimously. Item number, um, twenty twenty-one dash zero one zero, do I have a vote on that? A motion?
I'll make the motion to adopt resolution number CC two zero two one dash zero one zero.
Bishop, second.
I have Bettencourt and Bishop on that. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Procham Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Item carries unanimously. Item number, um, twenty-six, uh, this is Finance Manager Kent.
Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, um, uh, tonight, uh, Janelle Sampson, our senior financial analyst, uh, will present the budget information. Uh, she works so hard and she knows information in and out. For any questions, she should be able to, any questions you have. So, Janelle, if you're ready, go.
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council and Commissioners. My name is Janelle Sampson, and I will be presenting the fiscal year twenty twenty-one mid-year budget for adoption. Back on June sixteenth, the fiscal year twenty twenty-one annual budget was adopted. We approached the budget in a manner that aligned with the city goals and priorities, while considering the uncertainties of the COVID-nineteen pandemic and the financial impact that it may have. In review of the mid-year budget, we have, we have held study to this approach in that we have created programs that are equitable and sustainable to support the diverse community. We focus investments in, uh, in housing, jobs, education, youth development, community centers, and open, um, open spaces. We have, um, public employee commitment to the future of our city, and we have disciplined and responsible, uh, spending decisions. Oh, come in.
I think we're getting an IT assist at this point, right?
Right, Renee is, uh, I think helping pull up the camera.
Got it.
We go, we go dead here? There we go.
There we go. So, Janelle, we have your screen now.
Mr. Carrillo is out for a moment.
But if you're speaking, Janelle, we cannot hear you.
Can everyone hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I'm so sorry about that. Were you guys able to hear anything earlier?
Yes, well, I believe we got, uh, to goal two, so.
Okay, perfect. Okay. So, on this slide, we're presenting the Palmdale Strategic Plan and, um, the, the vision statement, which is to be a high performing organization, providing world-class service that enhances the quality of life through innovation, passion, engagement, and collaboration. And our goal in creating this mid-year, um, in preparing this mid-year budget is to ensure the long-term fiscal health of the city and maintain services for funding. On this slide, you'll see the citywide budget summary. The summary includes the general fund, special revenue, other funds, as well as CIP. So, looking at these numbers, you'll see citywide increases, uh, which, um, total a hundred and thirty-one million, bringing this, I'm sorry. Yes, bringing the adjusted budget to three hundred and fifty-eight point nine million. A large portion of this increase in revenue is due to transportation funds, which expect to receive reimbursements for grant projects within the fiscal year. So, out of this increase, only about three point one million is general fund revenue. On the expenditure line, we're seeing, uh, an increase in expenditures of a hundred and ninety-two point seven million. Thirty-seven million of this is from the general fund, while the remainder of a hundred and fifty-five million is from special revenue and CIP funds. And we'll go into this later in the presentation. So, while citywide, we are in a deficit position, we do have sufficient fund balance to cover all of the expenditures proposed. Moving on to the next slide, we're looking here at the general fund summary. So, we ended the fiscal year twenty twenty with an audited ending fund balance of sixty-six million. After our twenty percent reserve requirement, the city ended with forty-seven point seven million in available discretionary fund balance. Additionally, with the passing, passing of Measure AV, expecting to bring in an estimated twelve million annually, we are expecting three million to be received in fiscal year twenty twenty-one, which is from the April to June timeframe. So, in comparison to the adopted budget, you will see that revenues in the general fund have increased slightly, while expenditures are showing a significant increase. The largest driver of this increase is an investment in reserves, and this would be for things like capital improvements, information technology reserves, fleet, Drytown Water Park, public art, our pension trust fund, uh, and, and a few more that we'll go over, um, in the slides to come. So, while expenditures continue to exceed revenues, the general fund has sufficient available discretionary fund balance to cover these expenditures, while still meeting our twenty percent re- reserve requirement. We're expect, we're projecting to end the fiscal year with seven million or six point one percent available fund balance. On this slide, uh, you'll see a detailed look at the revenues projected through the end of the fiscal year. The change in revenues from the adopted to proposed budget is due to revised estimates, um, in property and sales tax, which we received from our tax consultants based on our Q three performance, or performance through Q three. Uh, property tax values have continued to grow in the city, resulting in an estimated one point six million additional property tax. Uh, sales and use tax is estimated to come in three point three million dollars higher than it, than it was originally expected. Our TOT, or hotel tax, is being reduced by a million as a result of public health orders that have been in place this year. Uh, we are also showing some decreases in the use of property and charges for services, which are primarily due to loss of revenues for parks and recreation programs that were either canceled or postponed this fiscal year. On this side, you'll see, uh, a detailed breakdown of the expenditures in our general fund and what we're proposing. So, you'll see increases of thirty-seven point one million, and this is due to, um, as I mentioned earlier, uh, reserves. So, we have twenty-four point five million in transfers to establish reserves, and this will be ten million for capital improvement fund. We have a million for fleet, um, two point five million for information technology. We have a million to establish a public art fund, two million for our pension trust, um, three million to Drytown Water Park, and we have five million to park development. We, in addition to that, we have two point nine million in carryover requests from prior year encumbrances and unspent funds. On this slide, you'll see our general fund five-year projection. So, this is a brief look with a major category, I'm sorry, with major categories, revenues and expenditures. So, the important point to take away from this is that we are remaining focused, uh, and conservative fiscal, making conservative fiscal decisions as we move forward. Uh, staff have implemented changes this year that have had a positive impact on the city's financial position. Some of those things include eliminating organizational development, trainings, conferences, and leveraging technologies to help us be more efficient, as well as deferring some capital improvement projects where appropriate, and identifying alternate sources of funding, um, for projects. If you look at this slide here, you'll see that in twenty twenty-three, we are showing, um, it's twenty twenty-three, we're showing an increase in our revenues going forward into twenty twenty-four and twenty-five, and this is due to, um, the general fund expecting to receive, um, some supplemental income due to Measure AV, as well as the, uh, from the CCA. On this slide, you'll see a brief description of Measure AV. So, this three-quarter percent sales tax was approved, um, on the November ballot. It takes effect April first, and the city is anticipating revenues of approximately three million this fiscal year. Staff have identified programs that align with the priorities for this measure and are proposing the following programs for use of those funds. So, we have here citywide security for one point five million dollars, mental health programs for seventy-five thousand, a community center for one million, youth sports programs for fifty thousand, Veterans Resource Center, sixty-five thousand, and our local hazard mitigation plan update for fifty thousand. So, this is a brief summary of our other funds. Our transportation funds make up the largest portion of our other funds, and they consist of funds that are to be used exclusively for repair, maintenance, or improvement of roadways and transportation. As a result of the COVID-nineteen pandemic, we are seeing revenue allocations from transportation agencies um, decrease in allocations of approximately two million for fiscal year twenty twenty-one. The city has sufficient fund balances to cover all operations and current projects. However, this is something that we are con- continuing to watch. Uh, CDBG funds, which, um, Sarah just, uh, had the public hearing on earlier, those were brought forth through the action plan for the City Council to approve. So, we'll. Our next slide is showing our capital improvement program, and these are the projects that are requesting funding, uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty-one, either new funding or additional funding, uh, for a total of sixteen point four million dollars. Please keep in mind, these projects are funded from a variety of sources, they're not all general fund. So, some of the big ones we have here, City Hall Security, one point five million. We've put five million in for land acquisition, the million for a future community center. We have five million here for Samuel Land Park, airport improvements for five hundred thousand, um, and so on. On this next slide, you'll see the recommended new positions uh, that staff are recommending, and there's a total of fourteen new positions. And this slide here lists all of those positions, they are pretty spread out throughout the city and cover all departments. We have three positions being recommended for the city attorney's office, an assistant city attorney, deputy city attorney, and paralegal.
Can I ask a question about those?
Sure.
Are those, um, it says annual ongoing, are those the actual just, just salary with no benefits?
No, those are salaries and benefits.
Okay, thank you.
So, under the city manager's, um, department, we have executive assistant in the city manager's office, a purchasing and risk manager under finance, administrative assistant in HR. Under administrative services, we're requesting an office assistant too. And in addition to that, we are asking to change the title of a currently budgeted position to a safety emergency services coordinator. Under economic and community development, we are asking for an economic development coordinator, as well as a principal planner. Neighborhood services, we're asking for a code enforcement officer. Under public works, is a traffic engineer, planning aide, and a deputy director of public works, and under parks and recreation is a theater operations coordinator. So, the current year impact of these would be roughly six hundred and twenty-five thousand. Annual ongoing, as I mentioned, was, it does include salaries and benefits for one point six million annually.
Um, before we leave that page, uh, just to circle back, uh, to Ms. Benton Court's query on the, uh, some of these positions. Does this, is this going to assume that the city attorney's office will be, um, uh, taking on some of the misdemeanor prosecutions? Being it seems that the, uh, district attorney is not gonna be doing those, especially in the quality of life, uh, quality of life issues?
This is assuming that we'll be enforcing our municipal code through the use of, uh, the issuance of municipals, or misdemeanor citations. So, it won't per se be taking prosecutions from the Los Angeles County District Attorney's Office, rather, the enforcement of our municipal code will proceed by what is perceived as a more effective manner, which is filing misdemeanors on those, uh, uh, what I say are the more nuisance types, type of objects, uh, fireworks and illegal dumping, as an example.
I'd just like to, uh, leave the door open here, because it's become very obvious that there's a lot of stuff that is just gonna be, uh, um, di- dismissed, um, uh, with the current, uh, DA's administration over there. So, I'd like us to be able to take a look at that, because I know some communities have their city attorney's office, uh, uh, obstinate handle, uh, misdemeanors and leaves felony prosecutions to the DA. So, can we take a look at that? I don't wanna get in a big debate tonight about it, but, um, I know that you're gearing up and you're looking at some of these issues, and a couple of the more egregious ones that, that we're, that we're finding. But what's gonna happen is we're gonna take on a couple, and then other issues are gonna come up. So, can we just keep that on the radar and, uh, and maybe get back to us, uh, as we, um, as we progress through here?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll, uh, prepare a full report and report back to the City Council.
Thank you, sir. Okay, that's good.
Thank you.
You let the door open.
So, this concludes my presentation, are there any questions?
Okay, anybody else on the council, or maybe we just kind of go down the list? Uh, Ms. Benton Court, do you have anything, uh, additionally you wanna add to that?
No, but I, I just want to say I do agree with you on keeping that door open. Um, I think, uh, with budgets being cut everywhere, that the district attorney's office might actually be grateful for any cases that we can take off their hands. So, let's definitely look at that.
Great, thank you, Mr. Loa?
Yeah, I, I, uh, agree that we need to be taking a look at the prosecution of misdemeanors that are not being followed up by the current, uh, district attorney. And I brought that up earlier at the, uh, briefing that we had. Uh, there's some concerns there that the city attorney's already looking at. I'm somewhat disappointed that from Measure AV, only seventy-five thousand dollars is being allocated for that. And, uh, I think we need to take a better look at that. Um, I think that it is, uh, common knowledge that, and beyond common knowledge, I think it's already documented, that the mental health crisis is increasing ever more in our city and in this valley. And seventy-five thousand dollars is a very token amount. I think we need to revisit that. In addition, I thought that we had previously approved reserves. Maybe I'm misunderstanding, uh, the, um, messages being brought here, but it looks like the reserves are being reduced to an amount that I don't think we've had in quite a long time. So, I'm just, I have questions about that. And, uh, as, as far as capital improvement projects, does this take into account that, uh, Ratchet Vista Park is fully accounted for previous to this budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, I'd like to know something about the reserves. I'd like to know something about the reserves.
On the mental health thing, that the new, uh, mental health facility is just opening up up there. So, I think we, I think we gotta give that the opportunity, see how that, that's gonna flush out, because as you well know, as soon as we start taking on the role of the county, we never get rid of it. So, um, uh, I, I, uh, I think that's also one of those, let's keep the door open, and let's make sure the light's on in the room.
Right, well, uh, we've made a presentation to the voters of this city that mental health would be some, one of the issues addressed by this, and I think that the amount of seventy-five thousand dollars is minuscule compared to the, um, crisis that we're currently undergoing in this city.
Understood.
Yeah, I tend to agree with, uh, Mr. Loa on that one. I, I know mental health is gonna be a huge thing, uh, going forward, and it's, and it has been. I wanna make sure that we have as much, uh, resource as possible to deal with it, and it's not overlooked.
Right, and just-
Right, and just just to be clear, it's only for a three month period, it's just for the one quarter. So we're going to come back with the committee to give a budget for the whole year.
Right.
So I just want to make sure we're talking about ninety days.
Correct, I understand, but nevertheless, in comparison to some of the other funds that are being allocated for that ninety day period, it seems minuscule. I I just think that there's emphasis that needs to be placed in that area.
It's that's a good start, though, April first to June thirtieth, you know. But yeah, we want to see more of that.
Yeah, and I think that'll also give us an opportunity to. Get a better perspective on. How exactly is the new facility functioning and where do we need to fit in to make that work better? So, good, Marie, I think there are a couple of questions there that you might be able to answer.
Right, so the mid-year adjustments are up for your consideration, so Councilmember Loa, if you feel that's inadequate, you can definitely make a motion to adjust that amount. And the rest of the city council, we just have to vote on it. The forty seven million we started with at the top was an available balance, meaning at the end of our audit for June thirtieth of twenty twenty one. We had a significant surplus left over, we believe that it was the council's forethought in previous years, as well as our staff being more conscientious about their expenditures. That resulted in so much savings and now instead of holding that cash. We're making sure that all the deferred maintenance and projects that we held off on and chose not to do because of an unsure future. We're now appropriating that money and making sure it's going into back into the community where it should go. So it's dwindling down, but that's what that money was meant for, to be spent on our community and reinvest. We do maintain our twenty percent reserve, which is about seventeen million dollars, so that's already off the table. And we're just allocating those funds now.
Okay, I I appreciate that, Ms. Ricky. So I would move in consideration of what's just been stated that the amount of seventy five thousand dollars be increased to two hundred and fifty thousand.
And when exactly are we going to use that exactly, because I think the staff came up with that number with a program in mind, so.
Mental health and staff can figure out exactly what the greater needs are, I think that they've been doing an excellent job in assessing that, I just think that there hasn't been sufficient funds. Appropriated or directed towards that out of the AV. Measure. So my motion is to increase it to two fifty.
And where are we going to be taking out the?
Yeah, where are you taking it from?
There is, there is some surplus in there, we didn't allocate all the money. And in in support, what I would say is. Let staff go in and and look at some of the programs that we have been pursuing. So we. Staff will flex and we'll come back to you at the. At the the next turn to see if that's enough or it's not enough, so. We did not allocate all the money that we were projected to receive, so I think we could absorb that. And investigate where to best.
Correct.
Spend that, but.
Okay, yeah, and I would second that and and definitely figure out how to best allocate and spend this money, that way none of it's going to waste.
Correct, well, you know, I think that this is a projection. And using the amount of, I think it's two fifty that was not put into these calculations. To me, it's a good idea to leave that as a cushion. Why do we don't get the the three million in that timeframe? What I was going to suggest is, I I agree with Councilmember Loa. We need to improve those services for mental health. But the additional money that you're proposing, the two fifty. I think that that should be taken from an allocation that is being proposed by staff. And maybe not the the two fifty, maybe one fifty to be taken from. The security for City Hall. I mean, think about the allocation for security at City Hall, that's one point five million. We're spending the most money, that's fifty percent. Fifty percent of the projected revenue. So I'm willing to entertain that idea. If we can take it from the security that is allocated, rather than taking it from a. An amount that is being projected, I think that we should leave that as a cushion, why we don't get the full three million. I I'll be willing to take that into consideration.
I think also, correct me if I'm wrong, JJ or Marine, but that that security was was a citywide issue, it wasn't just focused on this building, correct?
That that's correct, it it's citywide. I I'm not, and I don't think it's staff's role to sit up here and. You know, debate, you 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 debate, you see the numbers, we. There's there's cushion here. So it is, I just want to clarify, it is citywide with the mayor's talking about.
It's still fifty percent, it's still the majority of the allocation.
Right.
I I appreciate Mr. Corvino the comment, I because of the things that that have been going on and they're interrelated. The. Emergencies that we've seen in the last twelve months at least. You know, gives rise to concern regarding mental health and in security services. If there's money, as is being stated by the city manager. I think we should take it from the reserves. Let staff come back with some recommendations on how best to use that money. But but my motion is that we keep it at the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that it come out of reserves at this point, but we'll be looking at that again, but I think this is a a an issue that bears. Significant concern for on our part to protect. Our residents who are suffering from. An increase in mental and mental health and diseases and so on.
You do realize that that's that's for three months, right?
I do realize that that it's three months. But in comparison to all the rest of the figures that have been presented, it's a small amount and I think a. More appropriate amount would be.
I think it's taken that long to try to figure.
Do you want me to finish? I think a more appropriate amount would be two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I would ask that we approve that and that the money be taken from reserves.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to hear what what kind of programs or projects are going to be proposed. Uh uh, well, again, I just like to see if 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 the council decides to put it to fifty. What kind of programs, what kind of assistance?
Well, this is why I think staff has been looking at these issues and 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 they're in the best position to. Advice and to and to present to us. But I think that we need to allocate an amount that is commensurate to the crisis that's going on in the community. And something that is significant and it's not, it's small compared to some of the other projects that are being mentioned.
Category also includes homelessness.
I think homelessness is part and parcel of mental health.
I would think it would, yeah.
Absolutely.
Can we make sure that that's clearly stated if we're going to make a motion to change the amount? Can we also change the wording?
Go.
And homeless program?
Mental health and homeless programs.
Yes, I I I think that's a that's appropriate because I think mental health. Leads directly to homelessness and we see that more and more in our city.
Yeah, well, I think it's vice versa also, so I, Mr., did you accept that as a friendly amendment then?
Absolutely.
Mr. Bishop, are you second?
Uh, yes, I'll I'll second.
Okay, so can we get a, on that item, can we get a roll call vote, please, Madam City Clerk?
Can can we make sure, can they restate what the motion is so we are all very clear on what it is?
We're increasing the amount allocated to mental health services out of measure AV from seventy five to seventy five thousand to two hundred and fifty thousand. To be taken from reserves in in this proposed budget for this period of time. And that the homelessness be part of the program that is being funded here.
Okay, and is that is that in addition to approving the mid-year budget adjustments otherwise?
Well, this is a standalone motion, I think we have to consider the rest of it separately.
Well, that's why I was asking you, okay, we'll take that, we'll we'll do it a couple of times, City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Benicourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Excellent, okay, and on the balance of the budget adjustment, big budget adjustment, considering that the numbers are going to change based on the previous motion. Do you have a motion to approve that?
Before we hear the motion, I have a comment to make on on the. Additional positions. It is gratifying to see that we are providing more assistance, more employees. To the workforce that has been diminished since two thousand eight. I think that it shows a great improvement. And I think that it shows that we are thinking about the workload that our city employees. Have carried on the shoulders for these many years. Again, I I I'm happy to see that number of new positions. I think that having just one court enforcement officer is not sufficient. Given the workload and court enforcement issues that we have. Desert dumping being one of them, graffiti. And all the violations that we can see on on the streets, I mean, people taking trash and just leaving it there. For days. So again, it's gratifying to see that we are having more positions, assistance to city employees. One court enforcement again is not sufficient, but I I think that it it will help. I think that this will help getting additional assistance and. Again, thank you for including those positions to all the directors who requested them, I hope to see that some of them got approved. I'm sure that there were more requests, but again, these positions will. Provide more services to our residents and will make us. Be more. Proactive to the issues that we have citywide. So thank you again for having those many positions to make it quality of life better for residents, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, I and I appreciate the support of all the council and and the mayor. And the employees for since two thousand and eight, the employees have taken the brunt of the last. Economic crisis and. It's been a slow recovery and the amount of projects and the amount of growth. And and frankly. We've been working at max capacity, this gives us the opportunity, not just to get the work done, but to actually think on the strategic level. So we can deliver more for our residents, so I I appreciate. Your comments and I appreciate the support of of all the council and certainly the staff out there who who really have been hitting the ground running.
Excellent, I'd just like to, I I agree with what Wanda said and I'd like us just to make sure that we take a look as. When we get into the next budget. I think that the flexibility with the community service officers. Can pay off because it will, that role can also relieve deputies from the routine. Reports, I get two or three complaints a week from people that are waiting three, four, or five hours for, you know, my lawnmower got stolen or something like that. It won't work on the online report because it doesn't fit the narrow parameters, so that they they're kind of at a loss or the catalytic converter got, you know, stolen or something. So I think that adding that on there would be an immense benefit to the community, we will get more accurate crime stats because people won't just say, oh, forget it, I'm not going to report it. And relieve the deputies of having to do the routine tasks and leave them out to actually take care of the real problems that we want a cop to handle, so. Anything further or is there a motion?
Motion to approve the decision.
I want to echo the same thing, it's it's, I know staff has been. Spread thin for many years and it's nice to see some of these departments get some new positions filled, especially with code enforcement. I know those guys really do have their hands filled, so it's nice to see them get. Get a an extra guy to help them out on that stuff and. Yeah, I'm just happy to see this budget to where it looks like we're truly investing. In ourselves and in the community, looking forward into the future. So I'll I'll move to approve the budget.
Second, Loa second.
You have Bishop and Loa, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Benicourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
And Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Thank you.
Excellent, okay, I'm ready back on there, yeah, all right, so we'll move on to item number twenty seven. I know most of us have provided our calendars or reports for the record.
Are we doing twenty six point two?
The highlights.
Mayor? Wait, we need to. Address twenty six point two.
I don't have that on my agenda.
Oh, you have the the unmodified one. That has to do with the city manager's contract?
Okay. Somebody that's got it, want to?
I'll be reading it to you, Mayor.
Oh, I see it here, okay. So it's approved the amendment, the third amendment to employment agreement with the city. Palmdale and John J. Murphy, city manager, staff referenced, manager, resource manager, and Everest, ma'am?
Yes, good evening, can you hear me okay?
It's a little muffled, but we got you.
Okay, so good evening, Mayor and city council members, at the January twelfth, two thousand twenty one council meeting.
Can we get, can can we get a little more volume, please, we don't hear it here.
I'll I'll try my best, I'm like right up to the.
It it's good now, they they made the adjustment here.
Okay.
Bye.
Okay. Let me just start over, at the January twelfth, two thousand twenty one council meeting, the city council approved Mr. Murphy's contract with the exception to adding a provision. To require a super majority to terminate employment of the city manager. City council directed staff to look into an alternative option to ensure the stability and security of the city manager position, other than changing the municipal code. After research of other cities in Southern California, staff proposed a city provided mortgage to the city manager for a residence in the area. As a way to benefit both the city and the employee. That's available for questions.
Any, any, anything, any questions or motion to approve that item?
I think it's moved to approve.
Second.
Who made the motion?
Uh, Bishop.
Bishop made the motion?
Loa second.
Loa second?
Correct.
Okay, City Clerk?
Mayor Hoffbauer?
Aye.
Mayor Proton Benicourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Corio?
Yes.
Councilmember Loa?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
I get the item passed unanimously, I'm sorry, I had a other version of the, had my my briefing version of the agenda in front of me. Okay, moving on to twenty seven, I know that most of us have provided the memos and and calendars. Any particular highlights as we go down the list here real quick? AQMD, Bishop, you want to, got anything on that?
Uh, yeah, just to, I'm counting it up right here, I think we gave almost three hundred thousand dollars in grants out for a couple, for various companies.
Do you got, do you got, do you got diesels, you can turn them in and we'll pay for a good portion of it, a lot of discussion on cap and trade programs too.
So, yeah, we we did real well this month in in getting some companies some new equipment. There is one with electric charging that we're holding off on and we'll probably see a cutback next month.
Okay, AVTA, is that Mr. Loa?
Yes, I attended the meeting and approved a contract for a new flyer of America. For about one and a half million dollars, we continue to see decreased ridership, however, the funding remains stable. And services are provided to our community throughout the Alamo Valley. Despite the major challenges that are being faced by transportation and other. Issues, another important thing is that. We approved a dedicated bus service to the fairgrounds for the COVID vaccination program. And we added a. A clause to that that would add Palmdale, as soon as we can get our Palmdale Community Center. Approved, so we would also have that bus service to our program.
Excellent, yep, we we pretty soon we're going to have all electric commuter fleet as well there, so.
Yes.
With that new flyer contract. Contract cities, I'll double this up with the League of Cities because they were nearly identical agendas. Reviewing housing proposals with a couple of the. State legislators that were trying to be proactive on and just reviewing other legislative issues. The sanitation. What can I say, sanitation is a beast all in and of itself and there's a. And uh there's a lot of debate going on right now on uh some solid waste. We don't um use the solid waste disposal services, but in the big scheme of things, anything that happens down there affects everybody, so. Um recycle water or?
There was no meeting on the recycle water.
Anything coming, uh, anything uh dramatic coming out of SCAG?
Yeah, busy agenda uh for this uh Thursday. Uh I'm gonna be having a, a briefing with staff over the agenda items. Uh the meeting's coming up, like I said, on Thursday. Uh a lot of um items that you mentioned with the uh Contract Cities. Same thing with the League of California Cities, uh housing bills, as you mentioned, the, the state trying to uh promote the creation of uh housing. Actually, the League of California Cities' agenda was so busy uh two weeks ago that we actually had to have another meeting uh last Friday. And as you mentioned, Mayor, a lot of uh um bills being proposed uh for housing. Um those are the major updates for me on, on both of those uh boards.
I attended the League of Cities.
Anything else from anybody on the, on any of those boards that are listed there?
On the League of Cities, go ahead, Ms. Benicourt.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna say that the uh, the prison was dark. We did not have a meeting, so I did not attend that. But I did wanna note that the Audit Committee meeting that we had, that the city did get an unmodified which is the highest achievement the city can get, so we, we passed our audit with white colors.
I just wanted to mention, uh Mayor?
Uh any other uh uh particular activities that we should highlight for the benefit of the uh constituency out there? We'll start with Mister, Mister Loa and, and Ms. Benicourt?
No, I'm good.
Okay, uh Mister Loa?
Yeah, I attended the uh, uh League of Cities' uh Housing and Economic Development Policy Committee on January fourteenth. Uh adopted a twenty-twenty-one uh work program uh that involved economic development post-COVID, increasing housing supply, job creation, economic stimulus. Uh protect local level, um control, it was a very significant one as well. And that's uh small business uh assistance. Uh these are all partly projected uh policies that uh, uh that the league is going to be uh moving on this uh future.
Yeah, I think that, I think they're also looking at a version of the cap and trade for um arena numbers and housing trust and things like that. And I think they're working on supporting that with the uh other organizations out there, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Let's see.
Uh, anything else, sir?
Uh there was a HDC JPA Board of Directors meeting, um move fairly quickly on that. Um. You and I attended the sanitation district, as you mentioned. Uh the SCAG meeting that's coming up on Thursday, I will be attending that as well and uh getting a briefing tomorrow on, on, yes, tomorrow. So, and tomorrow morning, I will be attending the Palmdale Sheriff's Booster's meeting.
Yeah, there were two different uh versions of the sanitation because the personnel and adminis- it does administrative stuff. There was a separate set of meetings too, so uh thank you for reminding me that there was the other meeting, so. Um, good, Mister Correio, anything else, sir?
No, my reports on uh the City Clerk's office and part of the uh, the agenda. Um.
Okay.
Nothing more significant, really.
Okay, Mister Bishop?
Uh no, that's it. Um uh that, that's it.
Okay, uh I know you and I attended that Armor Goes to Clean Up. I think the next one's coming up is Good Springs.
Oh yeah, we're gonna do Beryl Springs uh this Saturday.
This Saturday?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
So uh.
That's a mess. I just got a bunch of pictures on that.
So yeah, bring uh, bring some gloves, uh bring some trash bags. We're gonna have a dumpster there and, and pick up as much trash as we can. We're, we're working hard to make sure we can clean up this uh, the desert and, and handle the, the illegal dumping in the city. One section at a time.
I'm looking forward to uh some feedback from Public Works on how we can um secure those paths to keep vehicles out of them uh with Buffalo Gates or something of that nature because uh between Amargosa and Beryl Springs, they probably have just as much stuff dumped there as the landfill does, so.
Yeah.
All right, so.
One, one more thing. Can we get an announcement or just an update on uh what's going on with the Pear Blossom Highway? I know a lot of people are.
Yep, I got, I had that.
So for, for, for those who are listening, I wanted to see uh, you know, from it, from the staff, what's the update on that?
Yeah, I had that on the council request for, for next meeting, so I think we really need to have a public discussion on that thing because uh I am getting a living tar beat out of me several.
Yeah, I know you are.
We all are.
Yeah, so uh, well, I told him to call, I told him to call you two guys, so trust me, you know.
Mister Bishop? Mister Bishop, are you all right if we set that for the?
I know that um we, we get incremental uh updates uh through the CIT process, but those seem like a little deal, like not a big deal, but you start putting it all together and here we are like four months down the road, so. Uh I would like, that's, I like the, I think, I, I think the.
Do you want an update now, Mayor?
Let's go, yeah.
If, yeah, we can get an update from staff, so that way uh the public that's watching can, can get the update as well.
Here's what I would say, given the nature of it, we could give the ten-second version of it.
Ten-second version.
If you wanna comprehensive one, I asked, we just have direction to bring it back at the February sixteenth works.
Okay, so February sixteenth, we'll bring back pictures, we'll bring back a more detailed. Even the ten seconds will satisfy us and I'm sure a bunch of other people.
Right, right now, uh we're supposed to have the road completely open by March eighth. Uh worst case scenario. That's as of this morning when uh we see that update. But we, I will have a more detailed update for a public presentation for February sixteenth.
Okay, so everyone, everyone heard March eighth.
Right, and, and Austin and Mayor, I, I think that we need to let the public know that we are as um frustrated uh regarding the opening of this as, as they are and that we are working as diligently as we can to get this open as soon as possible, um because we, we all own those areas. Those are our districts.
Right.
We need to get those roads open, so we are trying our very, very best to get that done and I.
Yeah.
Just know that.
Yeah, we are.
We read it as some jams on the uh Ranger Vista project as well and uh I think that uh, uh the frustration is spilled over. Um and just amplified over on Pear Blossom uh because it's the residents, it's the truck drivers, it's the visitors coming through, so you know.
Well, it's not only Pear Blossom, I mean, it's Avenue S, the, the traffic volume on Avenue S. It is because of Pear Blossom, yes, but it essentially, the frustration of uh us, all of us who have to get off the Forkin Freeway on Avenue S uh to go east on, on the city.
Yeah.
So uh, yeah, I, I, I know it's taken a while, but believe me, once that opens up on March eighth, as you said, everybody heard that date, uh the commute and the improvements will be uh significant for all of us to be able to uh to get where we need to go. So that's, that's a long time coming, but if you look at the, uh, the condition of Pear Blossom Highway before this project started, uh it's gonna be just transformational as far as uh getting to where we need to go. Um March eighth, looking forward to it.
Yeah, I, I just wanna comment, Mayor, that uh a lot of the impact is being felt on Palmdale Boulevard. Uh there's been some real deterioration of the roadway because of the heavy trucks that are going through there. Uh literally every day, there's backups uh from Sierra Highway backwards several blocks. It's uh difficult to get in and out of uh locations there, so uh March eighth is already a move date. It's already a worst case scenario. Uh if it moves anything past uh March eighth, I think it's uh beyond a worst case scenario, so we need to crack a whip there and get that done.
And, and to follow up with Mister Loa, um yeah, Palmdale Boulevard's been beaten up with those trucks, but they're, they're not staying off of Avenue S either. And I think when, once Pear Blossom opens, we need to have a conversation about whether we're gonna assess both Palmdale Boulevard and Avenue S to see what kind of damage has been done from this prolonged um closure of, of Pear Blossom Highway. The city um and the taxpayers paid a lot of money to redo Avenue S and I am afraid of how much damage has been done from this constant truck traffic going up and down on a brand new road that we just opened, you know, repainting and stuff on Avenue S. And Palmdale Boulevard too. I think they're both gonna have to be reassessed after Pear Blossom Highway is opened to see what kind of uh damage has been done.
Absolutely. I think that's absolutely needed.
Okay, well, there you have it. Okay, anything else on uh for item number twenty-eight? All right, uh a motion to adjourn then?
Move to adjourn.
Um. Second, Bishop.
Okay, everybody make a motion. I, you've got a motion, you've got. All right, very good. See you next time. Thank you, everybody. Good night, on the way home.
Take care. Bye-bye.
Oh, by the way, uh we are adjourning tonight's meeting in the memory of my mom. Uh I just wanna say something real quick before you all go. Um you know, we've all had the, uh that, that good or bad experience when you go into the ER or have to go to the hospital, you got a relative, but um the uh care and compassion that my mom was shown, um you, you know, and I, I don't go, I don't wear my little gold name tag when I go in. Uh it's uh, Antelope Valley Hospital did a outstanding job in caring for my mom and uh and uh she just had too many things, too many things happening all at once with her. So she's almost ninety-one. Hope to hell I can get close to that, so, but uh and I wanna thank everybody that did call me and uh shoot me a note. Uh thank you very much.
Mayor, I wanna commend you for uh, you know, keeping your.
Moms, moms are tough, so.
I wanted to commend you, Mayor, for uh keeping the strength and uh courage that you've shown throughout this period. Uh losing a mom or losing any close relative is a, is, is, is a very sad and trying event. And uh you've shown remarkable uh um strength during this period, so congratulations and Michael don't.
Lost a couple of friends too these last two weeks, so, so it's not been a good couple of weeks, so. Anyways, uh you know, not to be a downer, but uh it's a reality, folks, you know, so.
Yeah.
Um so thank you, thank you all, and uh thank you very much. Uh good meeting. I appreciate the uh, the thoughtful comments uh throughout the meeting and uh we'll go ahead and we'll adjourn. Thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
Thank you. Have a good night.